Just to let you know that outside on the foyer, there's some information on membership, if you'd like to join the organization, and a little explanation of what we actually do. Tonight, we're going to hear from candidates from Ward Councilors. We're going to hear the candidates at large, followed by the two candidates for mayor. Each candidate will answer a series of questions. The Ward Councilors will have an individual question directed toward them, as the Councilors at large will have one directed toward them as well. Before we start tonight's program, I'd like just to take a minute to thank our host here, the Neighborhood Club, who once again has allowed us to use this space and provide this candidate tonight. I'd also like to acknowledge Quincy's son, the Patriot Ledger, and QA TV, who's been gracious enough to provide our moderator tonight. And now, without any further ado, it gives me great pleasure to introduce tonight's moderator, the voice of Quincy, QA TV's Joe Catalana.
Thanks, Mike. I hope the voice doesn't go hoarse this evening. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Thank you so much to the Adams National Historic Association for allowing me to help you moderate this evening's event. I'm looking forward to an exciting evening here from the candidates. Before we begin, I'd like to ask everybody to please just put your phones and devices on silent, on vibrate, so we don't have any disruptions during the evening's activities. Thank you very much. Just a few rules, so a few housekeeping items to let you know how this evening's agenda will proceed. We will begin with two-minute opening statements from the candidates for Ward Council seats. So we'll go in numeric order, in wards one, two, three, five, and six. And on two-minute opening statements, there'll be one single question that'll be directed to the Ward Council candidates, and after that, the at-large council candidates as well. They'll each have just one question to answer. For time limits, I want to direct your attention to the timetable off to my right here. And you'll see two light bulbs precariously poised just above the timekeeper. The yellow light will indicate that there's 10 seconds remaining in the allotted time. Thank you very much. And then, when your time has expired, you'll see the red light. And I would ask the candidates to please try and adhere very, very closely to our time constraints. We're going to try and get everybody in and get all the questions answered this evening. So without further ado, we'll begin. And we'll begin, actually, this evening, as we've said, in numeric order. So we'll invite the candidates for the Ward One City Council seat to come forward. I'm told that incumbent Margaret LaForest is unable to make it this evening, so in her stead, Mr. Jim McCarthy will be speaking for Margaret, and then we'll hear from challenger John Coen. So, Mr. McCarthy, you have two minutes, and welcome to this evening's activities.
Thank you, Joe. Just want to thank the Adams National Historic Neighborhood Association for hosting this evening, and the Neighborhood Club for allowing us to use this space. Good evening. My name is Jim McCarthy, and I'm a volunteer for the Committee to Elect Margaret LaForest. Unfortunately, I'm not a great public speaker, so I hope I do her jest in relaying her message. Unfortunately, Margaret has had a family emergency this evening and is unable to join us. Margaret is a lifelong Ward One Quincy resident. She lived with her husband Jeff on the waterfront in Hausneak where her family dates back to 1891, with their two daughters, Kelsey and Krista. Margaret has always been civically engaged in our community and has an interest in protecting the integrity of our neighborhoods, preserving Quincy's proud history, promoting environmental awareness, and the economic development of our community. In addition to chairing the city council's environmental and public health committee, she serves on the Mass Municipal Association Environmental and Public Policy Committee, which works on the environmental issues of the state legislature. One of the most important roles of the Ward One counselor is communication. Since taking office six years ago, Margaret has been consistent in the public outreach, holding community meetings, snail mail notification, and updating her website and e-newsletter and social media. Ward One has two peninsulas and a majority of the city's coastline. Anytime there's a storm event, Ward One bears the brunt of this. At times when most people are sleeping and the storm is at its worst, Margaret is out in the elements, out in the field, responding to constituent concerns and keeping them updated. People always tell me personally that they make sure their tablets and phones are well-charged before these events so they can get her updates. Two areas of Margaret's focus, her council work on the coastal issues and the community preservation. That's two minutes? Thank you, Jim. Yeah, go ahead. Okay. If I could answer any more questions, if you'd like to meet Margaret, there is a meet-and-greet this Thursday, seven to nine, at the Hawthrow, so I just want to thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Appreciate it. Mr. Coen, you have two minutes for your opening statements.
Good evening, and thank the Adams Historical Neighborhood for hosting this. My name is John McCoen. Been a resident of Darrow Street in Hausneak with my wife for the past 23 years. I've been an operations manager and manager in telecommunications and IT for several years, with my whole focus being on responding to emergency-type of calls. I've been involved in several national emergencies, recovery from and all that, both on scene and remotely. And I've managed people for many years. You know, I've become pretty adept at identifying problems and fixing them before they happen, but you can't always be ahead of everything. So I've also learned how to fix them when they do happen and then put in preventive measures from happening again. And I feel that that's key in a council position. One of the reasons why I'm running, you know, in the beginning, I was talking to people, people in the ward that felt like they weren't being communicated with, that people weren't getting the news that they should have been getting. You know, statistics prove that somewhere in the neighborhood, 40% of adults do not use social media, but yet that seems to be the medium that we use in Ward One, and it almost seems like everybody's expected to do that. You know, my goal is to communicate with people. That's what I do for a living. If I'm not doing that, then I get called on the Capitol Department. I'd expect the same to happen to me as a city councillor. We had an event last night. Most of the people there, that I spoke with, people that I just met last night, the common theme was the lack of communication. It's almost deafening to coin a phrase. So my goal would be to establish communication via snail mail, frequently, community meetings and things like that. You know, I have a vested interest in the community. It's different issues that have come up, such as FEMA flood maps and environmental issues that haven't been addressed, and we need to do better. We need to pay more attention to what's going on to avoid things, catastrophes, before they happen, not to be responding to them, but to be reacting to them upfront.
Thank you, Mr. Coen. I'll direct a question to you now. This will be the same question, by the way, for all the Ward Council candidates, so you should all pay attention. And these questions are getting provided to me by the Adams National Historic Association. And the question, Mr. McCoen, is, "What is the most pressing issue that needs to be addressed in your ward? What actions do you, as a Ward councillor, plan to take on this issue?" And you have two minutes.
As I mentioned, communication is severely lacking, and I think from that stem all kinds of problems. We've had people, a man I talked to last night, Connor Russell Park in Southern Otterby, that has a bad situation going on in a vacant lot. It's been vacant for about 15 years. Reached out to the incumbent city councillor. He'd been reaching out for years, and he's not got a response. Another woman that was concerned about snow on the sidewalk over the window, several phone calls, no call back. Either elderly, one of them was an elderly person. Disenfranchised people that don't have the communication necessarily. I mean, I actually attended a meeting where an announcement was made about something, and a woman piped up and said, "Well, I didn't hear anything about it." And the response was, "Well, it was all over Twitter and Facebook." And the woman says, "Well, I don't even have a computer." So these are the type of things that we deal with, and I'm sure there's a lot of people in this room that don't necessarily pay attention to social media. And I think when we use that as the sole vehicle for communication, we'll even out a huge demographic. So for me, the FEMA flood maps, that was a lack of communication. That should have never happened. We have people paying hundreds and sometimes thousands of dollars because the proper information wasn't communicated by the people in charge. There are other things, you know, as well. I know time is limited. You know, being proactive is another issue. You know, ahead of the snowstorms, they could have done a lot better. Granted, we got all that snow, but at the same time, you know, they could have been ahead of the second storm, and there wasn't a plow in sight. So these are the types of things that concern me. Thank God, nothing happened, but it was by the cooperation of Mother Nature, whether it was by anything that anybody in my ward did.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you both.
I'll ask the candidates for Ward Two Council seats to please come forward. Incumbent Brad Crowell, and also challenger James Connors. Please have a seat, gentlemen. And you'll each have two-minute opening statements, and we'll begin with Mr. Crowell.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to first begin by, you know, thanking the Adams National Historic Association, as well as the Hospital Hill Neighborhood Association for collaborating and really giving, not only myself, but all the candidates, form to, you know, engage with you. This particular hall brings back our real positive memories. I was actually married in it almost a year of the day, so it's a constant reminder that my anniversary's coming up this weekend. And, you know, I say that because now, I look one year later, and, you know, we just had a child, so proud parent of a new son, and that just speaks to change, you know, and transition. And I feel that, as a city councillor, you know, operating in the city of Quincy, I feel like you need to be adaptable. You need to be a collaborator. In my sense, I've always prided myself on being that common-sense city councillor. And over the last two terms, I've really worked hard to engage with the public, you know, to solicit ideas and to make everybody a part of the public process. And in doing so, we've been able to accomplish many progressive things in Ward Two, particularly as it relates to the park system. As many folks may or may not know, Faxon Park has a completely new user experience, you know, and that's through the willingness and collaboration with many parties outside of myself. You know, we're working right now, we'll be introducing a master plan on October 29th to revitalize Florida River Field, which will include a satellite senior center, because my district, as you know, has a lot of mature residents. And what we've been doing is trying to fight to get programming located on that side of the city, so that these folks can get out, participate, and, you know, be amongst their own community. I've really taken a, you know, a strong passion for this. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Quincy, and I can assure you that the moment that I lack that passion, I will not be here before you asking for your vote. I do this, it's a labor of love, and it's something that I really enjoy day in and day out. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Mr. Connors, you have two minutes for opening statements.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jimmy Connors. I live in Quincy Point, and I'm a proud father of four children, one boy and three girls. My youngest daughter just graduated from Quincy High School. She's attending Ridgewater. I also recently got some good news, too, on my son is going to make me a grandfather in April. And then, we got another surprise. It's going to be twins. It's very, I feel very blessed. I've worked for the city for 26 years. I'm a blue collar worker, and I live in a blue collar neighborhood. I was, my local union president for eight years, and I helped advocate for my fellow workers, and I negotiated three contracts with the city. I see some areas in our ward that are lacking, and I'd like to see some improvement on. I'm concerned with the senior citizens also, as Brad's stated. I'm glad to see that we might be getting a facility for the seniors in our section of the city, but that would be great. I'm concerned about the people that live in the Quincy Housing Authority buildings, and if they're getting treated properly. I have parents that are in their 80s, and they still live in their own home, and I'm very fortunate, and they're very fortunate. But I know some people aren't as lucky, and they move into these buildings, and they work hard all their life, and they should be treated with respect and dignity. And when they, you know, need repairs, they should be done, and when they need help, when they ask for help, they should get it. I'm not sure if they're always being heard down there, but, well, that's it. Thank you. Two minutes goes by quick.
Thank you, Mr. Connors. Question for both of you now. We'll begin with Mr. Crowell. "What is the most pressing issue that needs to be addressed in your ward? What actions do you, as the Ward councillor, plan to take on this issue?" Two minutes, please.
Thank you. I feel that local government, particularly at the city council level, is nothing more than an extension of the residents. I'm a retail politician. I take constituent services extremely, extremely serious, and I do believe that, you know, the goal, in my mind, on a daily basis, is to really place the resident, the constituent, my friends, you know, above everyone else. Every neighborhood, every section of Quincy, Quincy Point, Penns Hill, wherever we're talking about in Ward Two, they all have issues that are unique to their particular neighborhood. And I got a really strong piece of advice when I was first elected, and that was that whenever somebody calls you, they're calling you with the most pressing thing that is going on in their life, however obscure it may or may not be. And your role as a city councillor is to respond in a timely manner, but most importantly, to get results to that issue. I feel that over the last two terms, I've really put myself, you know, across the table from the constituent and tried to deliver on that value out of constituent services. It's vital to be an effective city councillor, and I think that there's always room for improvement, like anything in life, you know, so it's finding alternative ways to get people involved. Listen, we got a revitalization of a park about to happen. There's a neighborhood meeting on the 29th of October. The reason there's a neighborhood meeting is because those folks live in that particular neighborhood, and they should have, you know, a fair amount to say as to how this project won't roll. That's just always the way that I pride in myself, and when I say it, I do mean it. A city councillor is nothing more than an extension of the people. The people will vote you in, and they'll vote you out, and at the end of the day, you know, those are the people that you need to listen to, you need to work with, you need to collaborate with, and you need to deliver for. And I've really made it, you know, a strong effort to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Mr. Connors, same question for you. "What is the most pressing issue that needs to be addressed in your ward? What actions do you, as the Ward councillor, plan to take on this issue?" Two minutes, please.
Well, I believe there's several issues. I agree with Brad that constituency services is very important. To return phone calls when people call you is of utmost importance. And I see, I see drug addiction in our neighborhood. I see homeless people in our neighborhood. I see homeless people in the parks, sleeping in the parks. I see homeless people sleeping down by the beach on that Avalon Road area. These are stuff that, these are things that have to be addressed. I mean, there's social issues, and they're not going to get solved overnight, but I think we have to change our approach to things. You know, it can't be warehousing people and then throwing them out in the morning. We have to get some social programs going, and to help these people, re-educate them back into society. If they're drug addicts, let's get them into treatment. If they're mentally ill, let's get them into a hospital. If they need social services, let's get them some social services. Streets and sidewalks are a bugaboo for me. My street was promised to get done over 10 years ago. It's still not done over. It's like a roller coaster going down that street. And I'm, and it's not the only street. I've walked the whole ward. The only brand-new street I saw in Ward Two was Wit Nav down by, behind St. Joe's Strips. That's a brand-new street, brand-new sidewalks. That's the only one I saw, and I walked the whole ward. So those are things that concern me. And of course, our senior citizens concern me, too. I want to make sure they're safe and that they're comfortable in their environment. And I think it's our duty to protect them. And I'm very grateful to be here tonight, and I hope you can consider me for a vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you both very much. I'll ask the candidates for Ward Three, please come forward. Ian Charles Kane and Carl Ruse. We'll begin with two-minute opening statements, and Mr. Kane, you'll begin.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. My name's Ian Kane. I'm a candidate for the Ward Three, seeing the Quincy City Council. First, I'd like to ask for your vote on Tuesday, November 3rd, for those Ward Two residents in the audience, and I would like to thank the Adams National Historic Neighborhood Association for having us here tonight, and for all of you for coming to join us. It's a real treat to present our candidacy to you. I'd also like to thank all the voters that came out on September 24th. We were really lucky to have a good showing. We came out on top, and because of you, that's why that happened. And I feel fortunate and honored to have had your support and your faith as a candidate for the seat. I'm a homegrown product of Quincy. I was born and raised here, and the fourth generation of my family to do so. I attended Wallaston School and Central Middle School before attending Boston College High School and B.C. While I attended B.C., I studied political science, and I worked for Congressman Stephen Lynch. My professional experience has taken me around the world and has across industries. I've worked in commercial real estate, raising institutional capital funds, and I've also developed international power plants in the Middle East, North Africa, and East Asia. Seeking to further my education, I stopped an MBA from Duke University. I believe that I'll be ultimately successful in this role because I've proven skills in diplomacy and negotiation, and I've also had the ability to be involved in capital plans, exceeding that of $300 million, which is currently the budget of the city. I also possess a strong ability to develop and manage working relationships across functions, demographics, and culture. My goal is to bring my global experience locally to Quincy, to the place that I love. I've had the last seven months to get to know you and the residents of Ward Three. I've learned a great deal about the perceived problems of the city, the downtown area, the opioid epidemic, a shortage of affordable and senior housing, and I'm eager to work with the city and with you to develop solutions. I've also learned what it's like to be a candidate and have half-truth spread about you. I'm not just trying to fit into any political role, and I'm excited to take on the task that lies ahead. I thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and I ask for your vote humbly on Tuesday, November 3rd. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Mr. Ruse, two-minute opening statement for you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, everybody, for being here. It's great to see you. Always interesting, you go outdoor knocking, you hope to see a few good voters. This is a great place to be. What I'd like to do tonight is tell you a little bit about my background, and I'd like to tell you about the qualities that I bring to the job. So a little bit about my background. When I first started working, I actually was in finance. I started off as a budget analyst for the city of Boston, helping to track and oversee one of the budgets, one of the larger departments there, the Public Facilities Department. From there, I moved into the software industry. Spent about 13 years in the software industry, working in tech support, product management, product marketing. Helped IBM launch a billion-dollar products. Also worked for small startups and small-sized companies, so I have fairly good business background. From there, I went to pharmaceutical sales, sold insulin, heart medication, anticoagulants, enjoyed working with nurses, doctors, interns, and surgeons. But something was missing. I'd watched my wife, my wife Ma, should get up every morning, and she had a little bit more of a spring in her step, a little bit more motivation to go to work. She's a guidance counselor at Braintree High, so that's when I figured, I'm looking for more in my job. I decided to leave the private sector, and I became a high school teacher four years ago, teaching business. It's one of the best things I've ever done. I enjoy it so much. So some of the qualities that I bring to the job, it's not just saying what you're going to do, but it's important to have the proof behind it. As far as helping people, as a teacher, that's what I do every day. I help my students. I help the families. I solve problems. I try to make things a little bit better, and I enjoy the sense of accomplishment of seeing, seeing that happen and come to fruition every day. As far as building community, for the last 14 years, I've been running Wallaston T-Ball. Over 2,000 families in Quincy have come and participated in that organization. All have been welcomed, and it's a wonderful cross-section of this city. For years, I've also been volunteering at the schools and with the PTO and helping out there, so I've done my part to build community. And lastly, I'm fully invested in this city. I've lived here for 25 years. This is why I own a house, pay taxes, pay the water bill, raise my family, send my kids to school. I have deep roots here, and I'm fully committed. I want to see what's best for this, for the city and for this, this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruse. Same question now for both of you, and we'll begin with Mr. Kane. "What is the most pressing issue that needs to be addressed in your ward? What actions do you, as the Ward councillor, plan to take on this issue?" Two minutes, please.
Thanks. I hate to take a page from what Counselor Crowell just brought up, but it's very important to recognize that there are different issues that pertain to all the different neighborhoods in your ward. So over the past seven months, I've met thousands of people, I've knocked on thousands of doors, and everyone has a different issue, because that issue that they're bringing up to you is particular to them, because it affects them personally. So one thing that they've been talking about, people have been talking a lot about, has been the streets and the sidewalks. I think that's number one, overall. And what we do about that, we develop a capital improvement plan, easily. We go around, we assess the situation around the city, around the ward. We work with the mayoral administration in order to devise a solution in which we can address this in a timely and organized fashion. I think currently, the way that the streets are improved, or the streets are paved, or the sidewalks are taken care of, are not in the most organized fashion. People don't necessarily understand how it's done. And that involves communication, so being able to communicate what's going on from the city level to the residents of the ward, and give them assurance that things are going to be taken care of in an organized and timely fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Ruse. Same question. "What is the most pressing issue that needs to be addressed in your ward? What actions do you, as the Ward councillor, plan to take on this issue?"
Sure. What I see, I'm going to try to focus on three key issues, I think. Development within the ward. Any type of development that's going to happen in the ward has to add to the characteristics and the value of the surrounding neighbors and the neighborhoods. I don't want development to take away from that. I want to make sure we address the parking, congestion, and traffic issues with any type of development. Another issue that I think is important that we need to deal with is I want to make sure all the residents understand what their rights are concerning where they live and the safety of their homes. I think we can do more to empower inspectional services, to give them better deterrents and give them more preventative measures to help them prevent illegal development from happening in the neighborhood. I don't want to see any of the residents living in an unsafe environment or an unsafe home. Lastly, the other thing I'd like to focus on is the opioid epidemic. It's serious. It's, a lot's happening with that. We're getting things happening from the state, from the federal level. There's certain things we can do here at the city level. One thing that I'd like to do, I would advocate for a position that's city-funded, that would work across agencies, work with the schools, work with the police, work with veteran services, to try to coordinate efforts in how we can best do things to help fight and prevent the opioid epidemic from happening. Also, the other thing that that position can do is now work and focus on finding and realizing what funds are available on the state and federal level, because that is starting to happen. I think that is an important part to do. The other thing we can do is encourage people to dispose of prescription drugs, focus on the education and the prevention. That's the best we can do at the city level. Those would be some of my three top priorities and some of the actual items I would do if elected.
Gentlemen, thank you both very much. Thank you. I'd ask the candidates for Ward Five to please come forward. Incumbent Kirsten Hughes, challenger Gina Ostas. Good evening, ladies. You both have two minutes for opening statements, and Counselor Hughes will begin with you.
Great. Well, I want to welcome all of the other Ward Councilors and the Ward Council candidates to Ward Five. So we are very happy to have this, and I was thinking back tonight, as I was pulling into the Neighborhood Club, the first time that I came to this candidate's night, and I want to thank the Adams National Historical Association for putting this together. It has been a long journey, and we've changed many things in the ward, including in my own house. I bought a house not too far down the street here and added two children to it, so it's definitely been a lot of changes in these past couple of years. And it's been a privilege and really wonderful to serve this ward, the ward that I was born and raised in. And my husband and I love Quincy. Again, just a great place to raise a family. But we've done everything, working together these past couple of years together as a neighborhood, from putting street signs up, from making sure stop signs are adhered to, to working over this winter on digging out the fire hydrants. I've heard from, I heard from so many of you about certain challenges over this past terrible winter. And then, of course, we faced several challenges that were really unforeseen. The hospital, which is obviously something that really touched this ward, and of course, the city, but really this ward and this neighborhood in a particular way, and we're still feeling the effects of what's going to happen and how to meet the challenge that development in our city is really posing to our neighborhoods, and making sure that the integrity of our neighborhoods and the strength of our family-centered neighborhoods really is protected while the city... the city continues to grow. And those are the challenges that I see in our city, in our ward, in Ward Five, and I am excited to continue to work towards making our city a better place and meeting those challenges and working together with all of you in order to make sure that our city moves forward in a responsible way, but also in a way that pays tribute to our history and our heritage. So...
Thank you, Ms. Hughes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ostas, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. My name is Gina Ostas, for those of you that I haven't met yet. I have lived in Quincy for 15 years. My husband and I have lived on Estherbrook Road for 12 years. I'm not originally from Quincy. I'm originally from Boston, specifically in Brighton. I entered this race, really, I feel like it's kind of a natural evolution for me. The work that I have done in the past, I have been in the restaurant hospitality industry as well as the healthcare industry, both highly service-driven industries. I lived on Cape Cod for about 11 years and actually had my own catering business as well. So, I have lots of passions. One of them is food and entertaining, so I was in that business for some time. I entered the race really just to serve the constituents in the ward. I see a lot of things that are lacking, a lot of lack of communication, and I would like to be that... I recognize that, as a councillor before me said, I recognize that not all people are on social media, that people... We have a lot of older people that don't use computers, don't want to use computers, and that's their right. So, I recognize that, and I know that people need to communicate in other ways, and I hope to do that. And I ask for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ostas. Same question now for both of you. What is the most pressing issue that needs to be addressed in your ward? What actions do you, as the ward councillor, plan to take on this issue? We'll begin with Councillor Hughes.
Sure. So, as I mentioned earlier, in particular in this neighborhood, the hospital is a challenge, which also brings to mind the great challenge facing our city and our ward, which is development in the city. And as we recognize, and as Gina spoke about, the fact that we have folks who've lived in this neighborhood for 50, 60 years, folks like myself who've lived here their whole life, and new people who are attracted to our city for so many reasons, and making sure that development, because we are an attractive community for development and moving our city in a responsible way is good, but making sure that we pay tribute and make sure that the integrity of our neighborhoods is preserved and that as we grow as a city and as things change, again, the hospital, what's going to happen there? Obviously, December 31st is a date that we're all looking at. I've been speaking with the nurses up at the hospital. I've been talking to a lot of folks in the community, really making sure that what's going to happen there is something that we want to happen there. And I think that making sure that everyone is listened to and preserving the integrity of our neighborhoods, again, but recognizing that Quincy is great for development, and while that's exciting, we want to make sure that we do that responsibly. And the hospital's a great example of that, of some area that is changing, and that we have to make sure that we have somebody minding the store with the experience, with the knowledge that I've been able to gain over these past couple of years about the job, about the neighborhood, and about our city, that that person is able to take control of that situation.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes.
Thank you.
Ms. Ostas, same question. What is the most pressing issue that needs to be addressed in your ward? What actions do you, as the ward councillor, plan to take on this issue? Two minutes, please.
There are many issues, and it depends on who you talk to. So, for instance, I held an event the other night at the Fennel House. So, for a lot of the residents there, one of their issues, and they are totally frightened by this because a lot of them don't drive anymore, is that Hannafords, they're very... So, Stop &amp; Shop has merged or is going to merge with Hannafords, and they're very concerned about Hannafords perhaps moving out and some kind of development going in. I don't really know what's going to happen with that. I'm just giving you an example. So, for those residents there, that's a pressing issue, right? So, there's a million pressing issues. It depends on who you talk to. And then, you knock on somebody's door, and you get someone that's just frantic about the fact that they have this big gorgeous tree in front of their house, and that's wonderful, but it hasn't been pruned back, and it's going into the wires, and so for them, that's a pressing issue. There's tons of pressing issues. It really depends on who you talk to. In terms of whether I get to be the next councillor in Ward Five, I would address those issues by going to the proper people and trying to resolve those issues for the people. So, there's many issues. There's larger issues. As Kirsten said, development, we need a hospital. There are many things, but really, it's just listening to the people and taking those small things that are going to make their life a little bit better. I ask you for your vote again on November 3rd, and I thank you for coming and joining me this evening. Thank you very much.
Ms. Ostas, the same question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause)
The Ward Six council candidates, come forward, please, and come in Brian McNamee. And his challenger this evening is here, to make sure we hear, is William Harris.
Good evening, Joe.
Two-minute opening statements for both of you. We'll begin with Councillor McNamee.
I want to thank the Adams National Historic Neighborhood Association for the invitation tonight. Anytime I have an opportunity to speak in front of a forum like this, great privilege. I've been a ward councillor for 10 years, so I think I should be able to talk to you a little bit about what I've been. I think that I'm going to run on my record. And as a ward councillor in Ward Six, I serve a number of neighborhoods. Ward Six is a rather complex place demographically. I served North Quincy. I served a little bit of Wallaston. I served the Old Atlantic Neighborhood. I served Marina Bay, and then I served one of the premier residential neighborhoods in Ward Six, which I believe is Squanum. In North Quincy, I've fought to preserve the quality of the residential life up there. There was a proposal for a C-Mart supermarket on Haywood Street, and I opposed that over a number of years, and I was successful in getting it to stop. Currently, they've already received final arguments in land court, but the judge, in over a year, has failed to rule. So, I'm fairly confident that the city council's vote on that is going to stand. When it comes to Marina Bay, I was one of the first councillors to pass a comprehensive noise ordinance that defined a special noise district for Marina Bay, and it's been very important for the folks down Marina Bay who've had to deal with some very raucous nightclub activity for a number of years. When you come to the peninsula of Squanum, the Long Island Bridge and the city of Boston's continued use of Moon Island and Long Island has been a big issue. I've been able to get them, in a recent plan to renovate the Moon Island Gun Range, to promise that they're going to install sound-absorbing, sound-attenuating materials in the building facades and fencing to reduce the noise from the gun range. These are just a few of the things that I've done, and I'm proud of my accomplishments.
Thank you, councillor. Mr. Harris, two-minute opening statement for you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you to the A&amp;HNA for allowing us to speak here. Somebody stole my line. 28 years ago, last August, my wedding reception was in this room, so it brings back fond memories, except for we had a few more people. We had 200 people there, so it was pretty packed, but it really brings back great memories. And as Brian had just mentioned about Squanum, where I come from, it's similar to the neighborhood that we have here. Fighting, fighting, we're permitted for A-building, A-style buildings, and right now, we have the Star of the Sea, for instance, that's being discussed, and the problem is that that could become a beast, permitted area. And once you set a precedent, then things can happen and change the whole look of the neighborhood. But I brought my children up in Squanum, and I really, really... I was a really lucky guy. 1997, we moved here, and they had great education, great... They were always safe. Kudos to the police and fire and all the public works folks here in Quincy. But with that, I'm in this race because I have experience. I run five cities. I've worked for the postal service. I take care of 65,000 homes and businesses up in the North Shore, Middlesex area, and I cover over a $10 million budget, and I do it pretty good because I was promoted from a mailman. So, I ask for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. McNamee, questions for both of you. The same question now for both of you. What is the most pressing issue that needs to be addressed in your ward? What actions do you, as the ward councillor, plan to take on this issue? Two minutes, please.
North Quincy, not unlike other wards in the city, is dealing with incredible pressures with regard to development. It's not that development isn't good. We need development, but we need the right kind of development. Development that doesn't impinge upon the quality of life that we've all come to enjoy in our neighborhoods, and I'm committed to fighting against any proposal that essentially challenges those standards that we've come to enjoy. I do think that there's one thing that we have to be careful about. Too much residential development is not good for the city. We need commercial development. Commercial development is very important to have a quality real estate tax base. Commercial taxpayers pay twice the rate of other taxpayers, so we have to be very careful about how we deal with development proposals. North Quincy, because it's at the doorstep of Boston, there's a great push to come in there with residential housing. So, I have to be very careful about the quality of the development that we see. I will say one thing, with regard to the Star of the Sea, and I think that people, if they look at my record, know when I say something about being strongly opposed, that I fight and I fight hard. I will not let my guard down for any development other than Residence A development there in accordance with the current zoning. I'm not going to support any variances that will allow anything denser than what's already currently permitted by the zoning, and you can have my guarantee on that. And I ask you just to look to my record for my credibility on that. I guess the final thing I have to say is, as a ward councillor, I've answered all phone calls and emails within, if not hours, the same day. I'll put my record of constituent services against anyone's, and I think it's second to none. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Mr. Harris, same question. What is the most pressing issue that needs to be addressed in your ward? What actions do you, as the ward councillor, plan to take on this issue? Two minutes, please.
Well, having, over the last six months, met with people in Ward Six and continue to meet with people at Ward Six, there's a lot of pressing issues. I had an event last week at Marina Bay, and I was questioned about traffic. There's a new development going up there. Everybody knows. I have to go to Woburn each day. Traffic is a mess. Something had been done, something should be done, and it's only going to be worse. There's a big concern there with the traffic, but that's not the real main... One of the real main worries, I already mentioned, as Brian has mentioned about the Star of the Sea and the neighborhood of Squanum with the permitting, and it's good to hear what Brian has been saying all along, but some real problems is the spending and our taxes. I can't afford any more tax raises. I'm about to retire and go into public service. I cannot afford it. There are people like my wife and myself who work two jobs. We need... People do not need any more property taxes going high when money is not being spent the proper way, and that was the major concern I heard with the people in Ward Six. Again, my name's William Harris, and I would really appreciate your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you both, gentlemen. Thank you very much. (applause) I'll ask the candidates for at-large council, but before we begin, at-large council candidate Dave McCarthy is unable to attend this evening. Mr. Mark Forrester will make a statement for Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Forrester.
Thank you, Joe. Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Forrester. I'm here tonight to convey a message from candidate David McCarthy, who was running for councillor-at-large in Quincy. Dave apologizes for his rare absence this evening. Business has called him to be in Washington, D.C. this evening. Thank you to the Adams National Historic Association for having all the candidates here this evening, and good luck to all. With an election in Quincy, it's great that the local neighborhood groups can have a forum to meet and get to know their candidates. Dave McCarthy, as many of you currently know, serves on the Quincy School Committee and has for the last 12 years, is a past Park and Recreation Board member, sits currently on the South Shore Mental Health Board of Directors, and is a member of the Board of Trustees for the Carroll Center for the Blind. Dave has chaired almost every subcommittee on the school committee and has been predominantly involved in the building facilities, security, budget, and special education committees that oversee those areas. Dave has suggested and pushed for health innovationists at the high school level to help combat any and all drug issues, and is focused now on the city as a whole and his desire for election to councillor-at-large. The downtown is at the forefront with David, and of course, the surrounding area. The historical aspect of Quincy Center and surrounding areas must be addressed with keeping in mind that this Quincy, this is Quincy, the birthplace of two presidents as well as many national figures. We live in a community of historical values that need attention, as well as the surrounding neighborhoods of Quincy Center. Dave is focused on all issues in regards to the entire city and is ready to serve. He has experience of local government issues and is proactive and is a no-nonsense individual. Dave has married to Roseanne, his wife of 30 years, and has brought up all eight of his children through the Quincy Public School System. He resides at 48 Whitney Road, is employed by General Dynamics as their director of security for over 32 years. David asks humbly for your vote, one of your three votes, on November 3rd, and thank you for allowing David to express his thoughts this evening. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Forrester. We'll move on to the opening statements for our at-large council candidates, and we'll begin with the incumbents, and the first is incumbent city council president, at-large councillor Joe Finn.
I'm relieved at the extra space. I'd like to thank the Adams National Historic Neighborhood Association for this opportunity this evening. My name is Joe Finn, and I'm on the Quincy City Council as councillor-at-large now for almost 14 years. I'd like to think I bring a wealth now of practical experience and knowledge to the job, but I think the greatest strength that I bring, quite honestly, is my willingness to admit what I do not know. I see that as a great strength. It was this strength that allowed me, with the downtown development plan, to insist, for one of the few times in the history of the city of Quincy, for independent counsel for the city council, to review a land disposition agreement of many, many pages of contract language. When the time came to part from Streetworks, I think we were all glad that we'd been through that particular process. It's this strength that compelled me to fight hard to preserve the position of city auditor, even against some of my colleagues. The analysis of well over close to $260 million in expenditures and budget recommendations requires a certain level of expertise and skill that, quite honestly, are not found with nine councillors all working full-time jobs. When she discovered one year, close to a million-dollar mistake in the pension line item, which, again, saved every taxpayer money, then everyone thought it was a good idea to have an auditor. It was this strength, as the president of the council, I brought in outside help, pro bono, to introduce an information management system to the city council office, and this will ultimately grant councillors more information to better do their job and all the citizens of Quincy more access to their government. And finally, it's that strength that allows me to ask questions. The late Paul Harold used to say that he felt it was his job to ask the questions you would want to ask. I have, and I will continue to take that obligation very...
Good evening. I'd like to --
Will that run out closely?
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Mike McFarland, and I'd like to thank the Adams National Historic Neighborhood Association for inviting me to come and speak with you tonight. I've been here several times before, and I don't think we've ever had this large of a crowd, so thank you very much for attending this evening. I've been a member of the Quincy City Council now for the last 10 years, and prior to that, I've served on a school committee. What I try to bring -- is that better? What I try to bring to the city council in my job now is I try to bring value to the taxpayers, value to the homeowners. Every vote that we take on budget, we have to make sure that we're spending the tax dollars wisely. When I was out there campaigning with people, one of the biggest questions they asked was, "My taxes can't go up anymore." And when you say to them, "Would you like me to cut something?" Well, no. No one wants this school cut. No one wants the hours at the library cut. No one wants police and fire cut. So, it's up to us as a city council to make sure that the votes that we take and the budgets that we pass bring you value for your money. You know, one of the few times some residents have to interact with their government is they put their trash out, and it's taken away. They call 911, and police and fire comes. Day to day, the average citizen does not have a lot of interaction with the government, unless, of course, you have your children in the school system. And Quincy has one of the finest school systems of any large city in Massachusetts. I will put it up against any of them. And on top of that, we also have about 37 to 38 languages that are spoken in the schools. And we have, over the last several years, developed the ability to have people come in to work with these kids so they understand both English and that. So, I will continue, if elected, with your help. I will continue to try to bring value to the taxpayers of Quincy, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor. Council candidate Noel Debona, and I'd ask that you share the microphones there. Yes. Two-minute opening statements, Noel.
Thank you. I want to thank the Adams National Historic Neighborhood Association for hosting this great event here tonight. My name is Noel Debona, and I am raising a family here in Quincy in the Marymount section with my wife, Neve, and our two sons, Tyler and Aiden. This is my hometown. This is where I grew up, and I was educated through the Quincy Public Schools. I graduated Quincy High School in 1993. I furthered my education at the University of Massachusetts, Boston. I run a small business here with my father, Russ Debona and Son Landscaping, for 19 years, based out of Quincy. I'm a current school committee member here in the city of Quincy, and I chair the health, transportation, safety, as well as being on the Sterling Building Committee as a board member. I'm a community activist. I coached little kids' football for the last five years. I also helped the veterans as a SUNZ American Legion Marsete Post, 294, for the last four years as a junior vice commander. I was the Ward Two Civic Association President, Quincy Point, when I was living there. I also was a park and recreation board before I became a school committee member. For the last five years, I've given my entire life to the city of Quincy. I want to raise a family here and continue to stay here in this city. I want my dad to stay in this city as well. We talked about taxes. We talked about downtown development. We talked about opioid epidemic. We talked about sidewalks, roads, and trees. It's a balance of the whole system. How do we put this together? Me, as a school committee member, making a transition as a council at large, is going to make a difference in the community. It's going to make a difference for this city. It's going to be your voice. I did it on school committee. I'll do it on the council. I ask you for one of your three votes on November 3rd. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Debona. And at-large council candidates, Neil Leang.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nina Leang, and I want to start by thanking the Adams National Historic Neighborhood Association, the Neighborhood Club, and of course, Joe Penwana for hosting this event. As always, I want to thank my fellow candidates for joining me here tonight, and I want to thank all of you in the community for coming out and always showing your support. I'm excited to be your next city council at large. I'm running because I want to make a difference in the neighborhoods that raised me. I want to give back to the communities that taught me the value of hard work. I want to help other working families of Quincy and together make our city an even greater place to live, work, and raise a family. Quincy's my home. I was born in Germantown, raised in North Quincy, went to Sacred Heart School, and I work here today with my cousin Jimmy Leang. Together, we run a successful small restaurant group, the JP Fuji Group, putting local people to work, generating more taxes for the city, and provide our neighbors with a good meal. Quincy's meant a lot for me and for my family. It's the start we've gotten here that's allowed our amazing opportunities, and it's made me the confident, successful woman I am today. I want all of you in this city to have these same opportunities. As I've gone door-to-door, meeting with residents across our city, I'm finding that all of you are eager to get involved and want to be a part of moving our city forward. And in these conversations, one of the most common questions I'm being asked is, "What is actually going on with downtown development?" As your next city council at large, I want all of you to know that there's someone who will listen to your concerns, someone who will speak up for you, and someone who will stand up for you. Again, my name's Nina Leang. Thank you all again for coming out and showing your support. On November 3rd, I respectfully ask for one of your three votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leang. Same question now for all the candidates, and we'll begin with Councilor Finn. As councillor at large, what will be your number-one priority to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Quincy? Two minutes, please.
Thank you. I think that what I'm hearing, going door-to-door and also from simple surveys that we take, that one of the great concerns that people have is the growth of the city. And in terms of the ability to plan for that growth, I think is probably the most significant issue facing the city of Quincy. Whether we do anything or don't do anything, growth is going to occur. And so, I think the most critical question is, are we going to be active participants in controlling and dealing with those particular issues in a smart, sustainable way that works to benefit all of our neighborhoods? Or are we going to let it go haphazard, chaotic fashion by not paying attention to it? I think we have to look very closely at the infrastructure, particularly around the traffic that's being created by such development. It's time to audit our entire 200 miles of roadway and transportation intersections, key intersections, to talk about how that infrastructure can meet the development and growth that will continue to take place. Can we do it in a planned, sustainable way? I've been saying that for a long time, and I think that continues to be one of the greatest challenges before us. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor McFarland, same question. As councillor at large, what will be your number-one priority to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Quincy? Two minutes, please.
Over the last 10 years, we have watched the population of the city of Quincy grow. The reason the population of the city of Quincy has grown is because, A, we're close to the city of Boston, and B, we are a very desirable place to live, to work, and to raise our family. As the current finance chair of the Quincy City Council, it's incumbent upon me to realize with other councils that we must deliver, again, value for the tax dollars. We must have quality schools that are well-maintained with well-trained teaching staff. We must have a well-trained and well-equipped police and fire departments. We must have streets and roads that are in good repair. And we have to do this all with staying within the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2. It's basically a funding balancing game. We also have to continue to take the funds that we receive from the federal and state government and leverage those against the city funds that we have to get the maximum amount out of a project, for instance, like the intersection in North Quincy High School. The city of Quincy paid the engineering costs for that. We picked up grants from the state to pay for the roadway. We have done that continually along the way in working with the administration and working with the state delegation and the federal delegation. We're going to need to continue along that road so we can provide the taxpayers with value for their dollar and grow our city because so many people want to live here. Why? Because it's a great place to live, to work, and to raise a family.
Thank you, counselor. At-large council candidate Noel Debona, what will be your number-one priority to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Quincy? In two minutes, please.
Thank you. I just want to touch on the downtown development. Everything hinges on this downtown development. For 30 years, we've had nothing going on down there. And finally, we have a vision to move forward here. Everything really hinges on the downtown because that's going to be extra money for funding for the education for the parents and the children in the schools. That's going to be the sidewalks and the roads and the tree maintenance that we have to do with the capital improvement plan. This downtown development hinges on our entire city. For the next two years, being a council at large, if elected, we need to go right into this and take care of this city. We're either going to plummet, or we're going to strive. And when I say strive, it's going to take care of the people that are on fixed incomes. We're talking about taxes. How are we going to accommodate for that? This revitalization is going to happen whether we're elected or not. West of Chestnut is being built. East is coming up very soon. We also have to think about other areas of the city, like the Wallston Center. These hinge on our city. Everything is weighed on this. It's like the law of physics. One without the other is nothing. And this is the most important area. Being a small business owner, being a community activist, raising a family here from my hometown, I'll be your next council at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Debona. And at-large council candidate Nina Leang, what will be your number-one priority to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Quincy? In two minutes.
So, the biggest issues I feel need to be addressed across our city are those of transparency and engagement. All of the issues that we're seeing across our city are different because we have such a large city and little pockets of neighborhoods. But again, as I go door-to-door, meeting with residents, everyone has some great idea on how we can resolve these problems and how we can move our city forward. Just for example, I spoke to a gentleman that had talked about a green space across a street from his house that's being underused, and he had an idea about making it into a public garden. And he even offered to volunteer his time to maintain that public garden for whoever across the whole city wants to come and use it. I spoke to someone in a senior center who was concerned about the traffic, more specifically the speeding, across her building, and she came up with an idea of using the resources, our best resources in the city, our people. The folks that live in that building, and although it's called a senior center, we all know that they still have a lot of life in them and a lot of hope to work. And she said, "You know, why don't you give these folks a chance to work? They want to go out there, and they want to monitor the traffic situation for the city. Let them do that work." She was willing to do it. We can collaborate with folks like that that have really great ideas on how we can address these issues because they're the ones that see it every single day. They know best how to come up with a solution. And as a city counselor, I want to hear from everyone in this city, in those pockets of neighborhoods, and work with them on their ideas and actually executing it because I think those will be the best solutions moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time. (applause)